States. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any chance to look at the last month?
Move that we accept them as presented. There's no corrections that I saw.
All favor.
Did you want to talk about the channel?
Um, yes. So, um, the county is using a new recording device. And for all public meetings and we have a message to share with it. Jefferson County has decided to record meetings using an owl multi-directional camera. And will upload the videos to a Jefferson County YouTube channel. That owl camera is sound sensitive and can recognize. And record conversations that are held amongst public during the meeting. For full functionality of the owl camera. Jefferson County would like to request that the public refrain from. Public comment until called upon by the president of the board. Jefferson County would also like to request. The public to refrain from commentary. Or audience conversations during the meeting because of the sensitivity of the owl camera. The camera may hand to the audience conversation rather than focusing on the subject of the meeting. When called upon to speak, please approach the podium. And state your name and address. Jefferson County would like to request that the speaker limit themselves to five minutes. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation as we move forward with this new platform.
Yes, first that will be a.
Can we do the treasure real quick?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And, and this is Megan Hoskins, the newly appointed treasurer.
I have the summary of accounts for you all. I'll be providing us every month for you. So I was asked to. Come to these and provide the summary of accounts and. Other than that, um, I have some. Money that I need moved from some funds to. Pay some employees. And we'll be your crunch. Do they have a copy of this? So, yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory. We're just taking any. Extra money, not extra money, but any money that we have left over right now to move so we can. Get a second deputy hired and we have to pay out some retired employees.
The second deputy that retired actually extended her retirement date. From when we did the additional earlier in the year. So that created some. Shortage there that we had to get creative with, but there was enough money in. Their budget to cover everything.
This is just strictly transfers.
Um, yeah, if you guys want to go ahead and do the motion now.
Motion that that we accept these transfers from the treasurer's office.
All second. All in favor?
That's all I have for tonight. If you guys need me for anything or questions.
I was saying in the future, you can email this to us.
Yeah.
Print it all out.
Okay.
Yeah.
There too. Now we have Troy.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Got a couple of things, actually. Just to kind of bring you guys up to speed on. The brushy four incident that happened over Labor Day and kind of where we are and what we've heard up to this point. FEMA was here. About thirty days ago now and did their joint preliminary damage assessment. And the purpose of that. Procedure is to validate. The damage assessment that was done locally. And our number or our. Plane would have been one point seven million dollars for Jefferson County. That was, and as I told you guys before, there's individual assistance or damage and public assistance or damage. There was very little individual assistance damage. In that there were only two homes of twenty-two addresses that were destroyed. Everything else was only affected damage. Even though there was a fatality. So the one point seven million dollars was the public assistance, which is bridges, roads, that sort of thing. And there are county thresholds and then there is a state threshold and then there's the federal threshold. Jefferson County and Switzerland County and Ohio County were the three counties that were affected. All three of those counties met their their county threshold or their local threshold. Together, all three of those would be combined to make or to meet the state threshold. The state threshold was twelve and a half million dollars, twelve millions and change. I don't have the exact numbers for Switzerland, Ohio County. Ohio County was somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars. And Switzerland County was somewhere around twelve million was their initial plan. FEMA's validation surveys. They validated our one point seven million. They validated Ohio County's. Several hundred thousand, but there were some issues with Switzerland County's twelve million. So last I heard, they were somewhere in the neighborhood of about six million. But that was being appealed by Indy, by the state, by Indian Department of Homeland Security through FEMA. That appeal is still a process. We've not heard. The bottom line, what that means is. If we don't beat that twelve and a half million jointly with the three counties, then nobody, even though our local threshold was met. Then we wouldn't qualify as as a state to get the federal money. So we would have to go back to Plan B and the commissioners. Like any highway would have to figure out other means, other methods and. You guys would have to figure out. Those financial implications. So just to let you know where we're at, there's nothing, nothing been. Determined yet, but. That unfortunately is where we are as of today, but I've not heard anything good in the last week or two.
A deadline that you know for that appeal.
I don't, I don't know that there is a deadline, to be honest with you. Federal Declaration forty-three sixty-three, which was from the Ohio River flooding back in two thousand and eighteen. Or seventeen, whatever that was. Just was closed out about four months ago. So there is no hurry. That appeal could go on for as long as they or whoever wants it to go on, I guess. So there's, there's no, it has to be done in thirty days or. Doesn't, doesn't easily work like that. So I don't have any information about. When to expect to answer it. Being that it's been two weeks doesn't concern me at all. It would have been way too soon. I would have thought. The next thing on my list, and we can do this in any order you want, is the additional that I had submitted to you guys. I wanted to just give you a little bit of history on that. The additional was for. Thirteen hundred dollars, I believe, and it was for the carpet cleaning of this entire building. We typically do that over Thanksgiving holiday, which gives us an extra day or a four-day weekend to. Let the. The areas dry better and it looks better and lasts longer. But because of some of the other unexpected buildings and ground issues that we had, we just simply don't have the money to do that. We can. Heather tells me she has a plan, but I don't want to steal her thunder, but if for whatever reason we need to wait, we could wait, but. They just wouldn't give us that that extra day of effective of making it look a little bit better on what we had tried to do early, so.
So, um. I was going to be asking for approval to clean up any. Accounts that we needed to for the end of the year. And with it being that small of an amount, I know that that amount could be covered. And instead of doing a true additional, if we could just include that in the cleanup, I thought that that would probably be more appropriate than filing a state for fifteen hundred dollars. So is he good to go ahead and schedule the services then?
Obviously choosing which of the two.
Yeah, the quotes were fifty dollars. Fifty dollars to park in the, the lesser quote is got better or stronger equipment. Is the only only truck mounted devices or. Backings left in the area that that provide that service. So, and that's the individual that. That normally has done it historically or previously anyway, so. We'll probably just go with the cheaper to anyway.
You also have some transfers.
I do, and that's just trying to. Keep enough gas money between now and the end of the year with the gas prices going up and down where they were earlier. You know, we did one before and this is just to clean up a couple of accounts that I don't expect to expend any more out of. Got a couple hundred bucks here and there in each of those to just to. Make the fuel budget last a little bit longer till the end of the year anyway. Is all that's for.
Questions about the transfer and the suggestion for the additional. I think those are the just transfers.
Yeah. So when we go through the transfers, either you can do the motion now or we can do the transfers. Later, in the which that'll be the only, well, we still have a highway transfer to do.
Could you might, I'm happy to move on if you guys.
Yeah.
Whatever you all want to.
Okay, thanks Troy.
Actually, I got one more thing. The actually two more. Sorry, I'll try and try and be brief. I know we will say five minutes, but I might, I might need another minute or two. I emailed you guys a week or ten days ago. I made you much of a spreadsheet about the, the handle building. And, you know, as we talked about before. We were lucky enough to have the building. But there's a few things that need to be done. What I tried to do was use the spreadsheet to provide you a list of what needed to be done. I tried to prioritize it. There were a couple of things that in order to even be able to use the building up to this point, we had to go ahead and get done, which was exposed the overhead door and. Get that up in order to get everything moved out of the fairgrounds and. All that sort of stuff. So there's a few, few wheels are already in motion. We don't have any bills for that yet. We were able to move the overhead gas furnace so that we. When moving vehicles and stuff in and out of the building, we no longer have that risk of. Knocking that down and rupturing that gas line. So that's been corrected. Everything else, though, is still either in play or still needs to be scheduled. The spreadsheet is not, there's, that's not quoted numbers. Those are just my estimates. Some may be high, some may be low, but I mean, I didn't just arbitrarily pick them. I mean, I did talk to. Contractors and expertise in the fields and tried to be as close as what I could. However, you know, I did this over the course of the last three or four weeks. Some of those numbers may, may have gone up, may have gone down again. And by the time we're ready to do the work, I mean, that's why I didn't spend a lot of time with quotes or just. As an example. You'll see on there where there's a tow motor. In order to be able to move the equipment or the pallets and the supplies and everything that are in there. I've been on the phone the last two days and talking. With some folks from the District Nine Coalition. And I was hoping that I would have gotten a text or got a phone call before, before now. But supposedly by the end of the day today, we were supposed to get the final approval. Where I think I've secured funds from the healthcare coalition to purchase a, a used tow motor. With some grant money. So this spreadsheet again is just estimates. It could come down, it could go up. The purpose of, of this was just to identify. What funds are where or how much can I proceed? I mean, how much can we go ahead and do? Just to kind of try and get a plan of action because, you know, it's an extremely useful facility and, and we're grateful to have it, but. There's some things that need to be done in order to be able to use it to its full potential for purpose. So. I guess I'm just looking for a little direction as far as that's concerned, but, but know that. With this tow motor as an example, and some of the furniture line items on there as far as, you know, the tables and some of the other. Not necessarily furniture, but the, the furniture type equipment, there's, there's a couple of tables out there that. Have been already been procured and if they're used and. I've been able to find those in Indianapolis and driven up there and loaded trailers and brought stuff back. And so. I'm making every effort I can to try and do it as, as inexpensively as possible. So just because that number is on the spreadsheet doesn't mean that I'll add that I will extend that or will need to extend that, but. I just wanted you guys to be aware of what's needed and try and give you an idea so you can give me an idea where we can, where we can take those, those funds from. So. If you want to ask me questions about that or whatever, whatever I'd be happy to try and answer this for you.
Pallet racks and secure cage storage. Just kind of explain what you need.
There's forty-one pallets. Sitting on the floor out there right now. That takes up about twenty-five percent of the eight thousand square feet that we've got available. So the pallet racks will be mounted or secured to the walls into a double row, stored along two, two walls. And then those pallets will then be stored up against the wall on that lower level and then using the tow motor. Putting that second row above that. So we'll cut the amount of space in half of what we need to put those, put those pallets in storage. The secure cage storage. Well, back when we took control of the District Nine Mobile Command Trailer for the area for the district. And part of that renovation was to remove a lot of the old electronics out of there. We secured grant funding to replace those electronics. But rather than have the technology mounted to the walls and pulling it up and down the road and having it banging around vibrating and, you know, causing that damage or that equipment to become damaged. We've taken and we've put all of the LED monitors in individual transport cases. We've got transport cases for the internet device. We've got transport cases for the drone equipment. We've got. Transport cases for all the à la carte type equipment. So if you call and you say, I need your trailer, I need our trailer and I need this, this and this with it, then we'll simply just take. The items out of that secure storage cage. And just set it into the trailer and then the trailer goes where it needs to go. But the secure cage is just, it's kind of a double lock system. It's just a pallet rack with a chain link gate around it. They'll have a padlock on it. To where we can secure that equipment within that secure building just to kind of help add another level of security for that, for that electronic equipment.
And you've got, you've got the health department, are there things out?
The health department has the two trailers that they still need to bring out there. We do have some, some of their pallet storage out there already. But we've not moved, to be honest, I've been trying not to raise that overhead door anymore than I have to. Because it's a, it's a tricky proposition to raise it and lower it. And I, I try and do it once, once at a time and get everything in and everything out while it's out before I try and put it back down. But as soon as we get that door where it's more reliable and get it replaced where it's safer to do. Then we're gonna, we're gonna move those other trailers out there and bring the mobile command trailer. It's in, it's in a garage and we're burning right now. And we're gonna be bringing it back down once we get that, get that door repaired and replaced for the safety purposes.
So what office space are we going to use out there for the key of those dividers?
It's not really offices. It's just more like this more work, just delineated workspace. When we had. The, the point of distribution set up fairgrounds during COVID when we had the, the trucks coming in and the trucks going out. And there were ten or twelve of us in there from the twelve counties across southeastern district. We were on our hands and knees, riding on pieces of cardboard on the floor and. And trying to just, just keep track of everything. So it's, it's not really an office so much as it's going to be. I might, my vision is just to have like a, a counter space or a desk space for EMA. A counter or a desk space for the health department and just, just kind of have those delineated. Right now I've got some. Chain link sex petition sections up there. They're. Just kind of making sure that that, that one corner, we just don't approach into. Use that as an administrative area. And then we've got a conference table out there so that in the event of a disaster, we can use that for. A number of things, anywhere from a media. Briefing to a council meeting or the commissioners meeting to. Anything that we would need to do as part of whatever disaster we were dealing with. Then there would also be that, that conference area of a large. It's just one large table with about twelve chairs around it. Which was one of the items that, that I. Procured from Indianapolis and brought back.
It is, I saw the key of those.
Yeah.
Put an office space. Makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, no office space. It's just delineated workspaces for the different disciplines that will be occupying the building.
Probably next year, I know we increased building and grounds. I can't remember if that was an increase in lawn care actually.
It will.
I don't have an error on that. I apologize. But that, that was previously, that went to fifteen thousand and of course we removed the PPE storage line item completely. Yeah, I went back to look. I didn't think we had put any specific needs for the new building.
Lawn care, potential snow removal. We agreed not to do snow removal unless the building was going to be actually used during. Any type of the snowbed. So we wouldn't keep it clean like we do this to the building. We would only use it for cleaning if we were going to use it. But lawn care was, you know, right now we're at forty dollars a week for lawn care out there. And there's, there's a small, a small dumpster compared to the dumps that we have here for trash. And so there's a monthly fee for that, which is less than what we pay here.
Yes, I would definitely suggest, obviously transfers because of a little extra money in the vehicle repair and the public service. Or the public information line item that obviously is transferred tonight, asking for that to the deal. I would definitely think if there's anything else in this current, this budget that you think may, may be able to cover. One of these areas even, you know, next month.
Well.
Back to attention next month.
Yes, and we've been looking at that too, but also there is still thirty-three hundred dollars. Left in the PPE storage for rental purposes, still left in that line item that. So I mean, as far as talking about the spreadsheet or talking about what you're talking about. There's thirty-three hundred dollars there that we could use for any one of these topics that we're discussing as well.
Most funds are there. I was, I guess.
Yeah, they're there now, but they will, they will be next year.
Right. Well, I think when you were going to purchase the building, there would be some other things that had to be done to it.
Right. And as a, another, this is another example of, and we're on the spreadsheet that talks about internet. You know, we, the commissioners were trying to negotiate something with MetroNet. You know, we all know that internet at home and internet anywhere is expensive, but. Where there's a, a device that we're familiar with here in EMA and we have. A box. It's, I call it the internet box, but it's just an orange pelican case that has a. Internet appliance by a company called CradlePoint, which works off of a cellular SIM card. And through the FirstNet. Cell service that, that we use in EMA, it's an additional twenty dollars a month just for that SIM card. There's no phone, there's nothing like that. It's just a SIM card. And so it's a little bit cheaper. But the, the CradlePoint device itself is about. The device in the box is about twenty-four hundred dollars, but it's been twenty dollars a month. There is, I've got that same device in my truck that I can use as I'm out in the field and I could, you know. Have full internet access out there and can, you know, upload things to Indianapolis and work there. There's also a tabletop appliance that is made by the same company. And that's fourteen ninety-nine for the, for the purchase of the product and it'll be twenty dollars a month for the five G internet off of that tabletop appliance. So we opted to not do the traditional internet and so. Provided, you know, we, we just don't know where and how we can do this. I mean, that's what that, that's what that internet line is for there. So it's, we're, we're again, trying to do this economically as we can. Trying to think outside the box. And we know that we're not going to use that internet every day, but we're going to use it. As we do inventory and we ever have to, to have some type of a deployment out there where we have a lot of stuff coming in, a lot of stuff going out, then of course we'll use it more and more of it. But it'll be used off and on throughout the course of each month as we do inventory. Keeps bar levels transmitted in Indianapolis and all that. Right now, parking my truck close to the building and we're just letting it seep through the walls, but that doesn't work very well, so.
Want you to need it for security cameras?
Right, well, right now we have a temporary security system solution in place. That does not require internet, but. If, if, if we wanted to have the full benefits of that system, we would need internet for that. And as far as cameras are concerned, if we wanted to be able, you know, to monitor those elsewhere, then of course we would have to have internet out there as well. And I'm pretty sure that this system that I'm talking, the CradlePoint, it's got a full five G capability. So. I'm sure it'll produce more, more bandwidth and like what that system's going to be. Even those open cellular systems. But again, it's a more reasonable way to do that with a smaller, a larger one-time purchase or purchase price and then just a twenty dollar a month. Be as much cheaper than two hundred dollars a month to a cable provider.
I think your sign that's out there is very, very attractive.
Well, we, yeah, we tried to make it.
As big as maybe I thought, but it's a nice, it's a nice sign. You, you know what it is. You know what that building is for.
We, we use the existing sign. We just changed the faces. And that was part of, you know, the request from Hamilton County Board.
It was.
Was to have some type of signage out there so that, you know, people were aware that it was an abandoned building, even because it's very non-descript in any other regards.
Very nice.
Yeah, I think it turned out, I still did job with. I guess I'm just looking for a little direction. I'm not going to go all the way. I just, you know, which, which way, which way you want to point me in.
I mean, as far as. As far as funding it, I mean. It would have been nice to have it on the budget for next year, but, uh, you know, we can. As, as projects come up, we can look at doing additionals or. What we need to do to get it done.
So you, we start working out through the priority list then.
Yes.
It can be, it can be covered under Coon Courthouse, which we should have the funds there.
This building.
You would just have to advertise.
Yeah.
What, whatever you're, you know, I would, my would think if you need to go ahead and kind of get some. Estimates and things, you know, and not everything. I know you've got, you've got it down here, but you know. Like this, whatever your priority is and everything and maybe, maybe, you know, you get to, to go, but it's Coon, Coon Courthouse is what I think we've got to come from.
You think garage door fix.
Yeah, that would be one thing I would say. You might just get that, try and get that fixed and we can, you know, and she knows enough, far enough ahead. We can have, you could advertise it for the next meeting through Coon Courthouse direct.
Right.
So. And I, if you, if you get additional quotes and or details continuing definitely on the priority level, what needs to be done in the next three months. Even, um, also just to, to note, um. Ongoing expenses, which really should have been in the twenty twenty-three budget. Utilities, for example. Um, we were foolish not to make sure that, I mean, that.
Those are coming through the commissioner's office. Same as all the other.
All the other.
Yeah, that's not an additional expense.
I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at a couple of these like the internet, which would be monthly ongoing expenses versus replacement of an overhead door.
But that twenty dollar, that, that cellular SIM card I have already covered in my budget. So it's already there.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking to make a note if there's anything that I see would be a new, um, ongoing reoccurring expense versus. It's a one-time fee.
Right, some of those expenses. I put on there just so you kind of got the whole, got the big picture. Most of that is, is, is already covered in my existing budget or in what you've already approved for next year. But again, you know, like the, the internet appliance. I've probably, on my eleven thirty-eight account, I've got enough where I could. Could buy that out of that. It doesn't explain how it's recovered. So I, I don't know that we would need any of that. It's, it's the bigger items. The tow motor, if I can, because other, other funding secured today or tomorrow, you know, I mean, it's those, the, the pallet and rack storage. Though, that's what I don't have the money for. So currently I'm really about.
Yeah, I'd go ahead and start getting some quotes.
Okay.
Yeah, but definitely for the, the garage door, if you're having a lot of trouble, that's something that needs to be revised right away.
And actually the garage door, when they exposed the doors and we found, you know, that they needed that, they needed that attention. I went ahead and just told them to go ahead and, and the door's been ordered for almost two months now, three months, whatever it's been. And the door is in. But it can be installed because the overhead center rail or track. Is what they call a low-profile track because of the distance between the top of the door and the, the roof line where it meets, comes onto the wall. So there's not. So there's not enough room for a standard track, but the door came with the standard track, they couldn't install it because it had to have a little profile track. And the low profile track is of course backordered with supply chain issues and all this other stuff, so that's why it's not been done yet. I pulled the trigger on that pretty early because of the safety concerns. And thankfully I did because now we're, we're in line with this backorder and. Um, I'm glad we went ahead and did that now.
Could I, could I come up, come up here and us run out just so I can see the situation?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Pick me up on the way.
No, thank you, and then um, one other quick question, I don't have five minutes, I'm sorry. You, several months ago, you asked about um, defibrillators in the county offices or the auxiliary buildings. And I started a process and got the quotes and the salespeople and the vultures are still circling, so. I keep saying I haven't heard anything else, do you want me to?
That is something.
Call them off or you want me to?
I took one from the team, by the way. I talked to them, so if you didn't.
They've been pretty, they've been pretty relentless, so I, we just need to know what to tell them, I mean, do we still want to do it or we not want to do it?
I think it's, I think it's a necessary, I think it's necessary that we do it, really, because it's a safety issue.
Yeah, those, I mean, those numbers were eight hundred and if we did the lease, the lease plan. It was uh, eight hundred. Eight hundred and forty dollars for the year for the lease. For eight hundred and forty dollars, no, I'm sorry, that's not right. A monthly agreement, unit price, a hundred and twenty dollars a month, it's eight hundred and forty dollars a month.
And that's the one that they would check every year.
And they, they do all the maintenance and all the replacements, they keep them current. Uh, replace all the supplies and that's for seven units. This is what, based on those buildings we identified, including Fairgrass.
How many quotes do we have on that?
Uh, two.
Recommend a third one on something that's that, that high of value, that, that number seems really high per month. I don't know what one of those units costs, I'm sure they're not cheap, but. Hundred and twenty dollars a unit per month, that's a pretty pricey lease.
This, this is the one that I just quoted is from the same company that maintains the one in the courthouse. And that's why I kind of went with them, just because we could add them on to that existing account. And if I'm not mistaken, I was having trouble finding someone that offered that maintenance and upkeep and supply and all that. This is not a simple, it's just like coming in and changing your rugs and giving you the soap dispenser fill up in the bathroom, they kind of do it all just one trip, so. But I'll, I'll try and find.
So is that hundred and twenty for all?
Exclue the device authority in the courthouse.
So that would include all, all of seven of them, is that hundred and twenty dollars or?
It's a hundred and twenty dollars each.
Okay.
Times seven each month, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Per month.
And that was the cheaper of the two that we had.
Yes.
And then I, I just, like I said, we, I was having trouble finding.
Hold up the vultures for a couple more months.
Okay. And look for a third quote and get that to you.
I asked one individual, but personally I thought KDH would know in regard to any contractual services there or how to check if we do have an overt. Company that does the maintenance, obviously mall, the boys particularly, not just the husband apartment, but in all counties. And that individual coordinates all the CDR training, no, actually they weren't responsible for that. And I apologize, I, I didn't know the next step to ask maybe the next person, so I'm going to jump back on that.
Do you know what company that was?
And she's in, um, yes, Sherry Brown, did not know. And she does all CDR cows.
I think it's sometimes because I think basically.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll try and. I think that's all I have on my list, any other questions for me? Thank you all very much.
Commissioners.
I can go first, I guess, for them, um, the ordinance that we discussed last time. And it is actually um dissolving the uh. Cable Advisory Board. Has now been signed by the commissioners, the city and the town of Hanover, so um, it just needs a motion from. You guys to move forward and to be reported.
And the commissioners have all signed.
I'll, I'll make that question, I know I've received, I know the town of Hanover and the city board, I just think there's already been steps in place to note that. Some of the equipment will be coming back to us and the other two entities obviously have also um. Knew exactly what um, services they were utilizing to publicly post and videotape meetings.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Okay, and then the other item that they had was um. I was told that it's going to be good to discuss animal shelter. You told me that you were going to find.
Well, I thought that I was going to be.
Oh, okay, well, I can go ahead and, so I did not have any um, additionals turned in from the animal shelter and they have numerous. Negative accounts, so I did the best I could from my standpoint to appropriate the money so that hopefully it would hold for the next month. Um, I have since then looked and they are further negative than what I have actually requested for them. I'm not sure what their plans are.
Then I don't have a showing that they're not making here.
The fund is not negative.
The fund is not negative. The accounts that they go into are not.
Right. Um, I am concerned that the fund will go negative. It is always a concern at the end of the year, it's kind of touch and go, but this year especially is. Um, a little troublesome for me and I just thought you guys should have that knowledge to maybe have a plan or be thinking of a plan. In case in December, if that is a need to. Let's give the funds.
And I still have a lot of outstanding bills that I haven't, that I haven't paid. Just keep coming to me, I mean, like, a lot of vet bills, it's just constantly coming to those line items.
So, are you mean like the spay neuter and that type of thing, so are they not paying for that, I mean, is it, when, I mean, when they're, when they're adopting an animal, have they not been paying for that?
Well, they changed the policy for the adoption prices and the adoption prices do not cover a third of the money, I've actually been in there, so. I kind of, like, if we had a, the cheapest cat, like for a male cat. It cost us a total of a hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents to get it vetted, spayed, neutered and all that, and we're charging forty-five dollars for an adoption fee. So we're losing seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents for each male cat, and that gets higher with the female cat. And I, I worked out like for a male dog, we're putting a hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents into it as the cheapest vet that we can go to. And we're, we're charging a hundred and twenty-five dollar adoption fee for that, so we're losing sixty-nine, sixty-one with each. And then like a female would have even more money that we're losing.
I was always having the impression that whoever was adopting was, was doing, was paying for that.
Yeah, they changed it to a flat fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars to adopt a dog and forty-five dollars to adopt a cat. I'm going to go back with a request to get that changed so that we can cover those costs, but. I'm going back six months for the bills of losing this month, of losing that amount. So I'm trying to come up with ways to pay what's already been spent.
Unless that's being taken to dissolve the advisory board. It's done. Um, so obviously, this leaves financial decisions and data decisions to the staff.
Which they had dated.
Sure, but obviously changing staff, um, it's always, it interrupts, changes that process for me.
Was, was this difference in the price and everything voted on, I mean, that was what the advisory board decided on, you know?
That was before me.
I know. That they changed the, the amount they were charging.
They were supposed to be using Carroll, or Carrollton County Animal Clinic.
And that was a whole lot cheaper.
And that was a whole lot cheaper, but adopters here don't really want to go there to take the animal to get it fixed, so they're, they're opting for local vets. And they're just, they were just allowing, you know, to wherever, go wherever, no matter the cost. I'm trying to get it met.
Because I think the Carroll County, whether you just say it was like forty dollars.
Yeah, for a cat, and then forty dollars for a cat flat rate, and then it's seventy dollars for a dog at a lot rate. And then they charge seven dollars for rabies vaccine, but then when you add in like the microchipping we do in-house, um, the deworming, the flea meds. The vaccinations that we have to give them and all that other stuff, that's where it gets even more expensive than that.
I've looked around other places and pretty much standard now, it's two hundred dollars a dog to adopt from animal shelter.
Yeah, and that would, that would cover, I mean, or if we could get back to where we were doing it, where it was just a little fee to cover our in-house. And then we had the adopter to prepay the amount of spay, neuter and rabies. And then, so that the next animal that come in, we already had that, that in-house fund ready for the next one and it just kept going down. But that hasn't been going for a while.
Really, I think you would have to almost have a contract with a specific location and you would have to tell them this is where you're taking your animal to get spayed, to be able. To have that set price. Because if not, we're going to constantly have the.
Way back, way back when I got my dog was thirteen and some years ago, they actually gave me a voucher.
Mm-hmm.
And the county would pay seventy-five dollars towards it, or I actually paid the seventy-five dollars for the voucher and then. Once it got the animal fixed, brought it back and they would give me the seventy-five dollars back, but if I took it wherever, you know, because I earned twenty dollars to do it, the rest of it's on me.
Right, and that would be something that.
You know, just so y'all are aware, the, all four vets here locally have, are coming together to try to get on the same um. Money line. So that everybody will charge X amount for a spay, everybody will charge X amount for a neuter. It's, we're just getting that final total and then once I get what they've all agreed to, then I could possibly set that as my adoption fee plus the in-house cost.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where the problem has been because it's got lowered too much, you know.
Yeah.
Because I know they always had to pick it up, it, for years, they had to pick it up, yeah.
And then like just the vet bills in general for the care of the animals because there's um. We're keeping more that we can, you know, try to fix where before.
And the chip, they didn't use to put a chip in either, you know, which I think is a good thing, you know.
It is a good thing, but obviously continuing to leave funds when funding is not there. I, I only mention that because if there's something like that, that is simply not a necessity, a rabies vaccine, it is, and that's our job to do that before any animals are adopted out. I'm assuming there's many counties out there that don't even um.
Do the money.
Mandating every adoptable dog to be spayed and neutered as much as we're all fans of that, because the money may not be there.
Yeah, but, but what we're finding with the microchip is nobody's registering either, so.
I just, I just have to wonder um.
But it has the seventeen dollar fee on top of the microchip to register them for a year. So that would be an extra seventeen dollars, well, actually, I think Dr. Branson said we have to twenty.
That's per year?
No, yeah, per year, so you would, but that would add another twenty dollars, I think that's what, that's what they're going to help me um.
It's a bit unnecessary, they, if the person that's adopting wants a chip, that makes it a bit.
No, I mean, I think they, I haven't seen the actual bill, but I think they fly like three hundred, like three. Yeah, and, or. I don't know, I don't remember. It was, it was an outrageous amount.
You want to, you want to put it in.
Microchip and there's three for that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too, because there, there's no reason to be losing money in that, in that manner.
Right.
You know, a lot of people aren't even.
They're going to utilize it.
They're not using it, yeah, they're not signing that part.
So on, on average per month, how many animals are we adopting?
Trish, I'm sorry.
On a, a monthly average, how many animals are we adopting now, roughly?
Oh gosh, I don't have that on, on hand, I've only been there a month.
Oh, you're fine.
A little still learning.
More than, more than twenty or?
This month, no, um, I have, I want to say we've adopted like eight total animals. We have some that we have put out into a potential foster to adopt program, but there's no, you know, no certainty on if those will be adopted yet or not. But I think only actually eight, everyone's flat out adopted.
And do you think obviously January New Year is a time to, to make those changes, I don't think we can wait any longer. And if the advisory board obviously is no longer in place, staff making decisions with supervision and guidance from the, the commissioner representative as well. To, to change policies with, with not making the microchip mandatory, there's an additional fifty dollar fee if you want to do it. Changing those adoption fees, that must cover those costs, I, I don't think we can wait any longer. I think January probably is a great time to reintroduce those, yeah, to introduce those new fees and.
Worked up and get with Molly here and we'll, we'll get them going.
I know that doesn't, um.
I know it doesn't.
Doesn't factor what has to be paid and, yeah, with one, I'm running to pay.
Like, with the vet care, that's the other thing, like for in-house vet care. Um, for like the upper respiratorys, barbo, all that kind of stuff, is there a limit, like? That's what, I need somebody to answer me that, is there a minimum, how far do we? Yeah, how far do we meditate? If it's going to give them, you know, a, a eighty percent chance of good life, but it's going to cost us five grand to do it.
Okay, that's.
That's where I, I, I need somebody other than me to set, to help me set that kind of guideline because I don't want to really be the one.
I applaud that vets trying to make prices more consistent and or potentially lower prices a little bit, but. My gosh, there are, sometimes I, I see these numbers and think we can hire a long vet to work there. Um, yeah.
And, you know.
And that's hard enough to get in anyway.
About that, didn't we?
Yeah. We, that's an idea too, I mean, if we could find somebody willing to come in to do that.
That makes us to see what the program at Hannah McCollum will do for us.
Yeah, but that'll be down the road. But it, but see, we need somebody that can do the spay neuters and the rabies vaccine, so I don't know if, if the schooling, you know, like.
I think down the road, they'll be able to assist with like the vaccinations, but I have the other piece of it, I'm not sure.
I can see, like, I'm trained to do the vaccinations, I can do them in-house, give them myself without, without a cost. Um, it's, but the rabies has to be tracked through a vet. So that's the only reason why we need the vet to give that, that shot, because it has to be sent into the state.
And uh, Joy is working with the other vets. Um, seeing if they're, any interest in having a rotating schedules coming up and.
Yes, I had my first of that rotating schedule today.
Yeah, they each bed, that way it's not all on Joy, it's, each bed comes through and, and kind of oversees, make sure, you know. The, the people working up there, you know, at the kennel are, are veterinarians, they're not going to spot every, every little issue with an animal, it's just impossible, so.
Now, we, I guess I wish, I'll just mention this last day, and I wish there was an easy answer. Um, because I, I, I think ultimately the decision would fall on the staff, but, yeah, it's, it's one task there, I think that. Five thousand, there's too much to spend to save one kitten that has a fifty percent chance of living, while somebody else would cut off the right arm to save that kitten, so. It is hard and, and, yeah, there's not a, um, right or wrong or I. What staff started to do.
You look at your own animals, you know, when something big like that happens and it's horrible.
Quality, right, you're factoring a lot of things.
Yeah, you have to make that decision.
But the money does have to be there, um.
Extraordinary measures are difficult.
Right, well, I, I don't think this year was looked at as the money was there, it was just looked at as the animals to be taken care of, so let's do it. Right, well, I, I don't think this year was looked at as the money was there, it was just looked at as the animals to be taken care of, so let's do it. And that's why our vet is almost tripled from years before.
So what is presented here, is this what you've been talking about, Heather, then is what, uh, what needs to be cleaned up?
That was just to get us cleaned up, but at this point with the new bills that have been turned in, this is not even enough. Um, but this is what I have advertised to get us started. Um, for the fund four one zero three, that is the donation fund. And basically what I did is appropriated everything that we've received for those specific items so that they can start using that money to help that, the other fund out as well. But, um.
I only have one question on that, what would sponsor equipment mean?
So they had a program out, um, to sponsor a new washer and dryer and they actually contacted local businesses, would you like to sponsor a washer dryer? They ended up collecting the full thirty-six hundred dollars for some equipment or in the shelter that was needed. So that is the thirty-six hundred dollars for sponsors.
Basically, we need appropriate money to get them through the rest of the year.
Yes, and this is a start, but I will need some, um, more official numbers and how payroll is going to work for December.
So is this, do we need to wait to see what is coming in? How are the donation, uh, how are donations coming in financially, money-wise? I mean, I feel, I talked, I talked to you about.
Um, I have not seen a lot of donations this.
I just, I just noticed some in the paper just recently about some, some passing that some people and.
Well, like, uh, physical donations like dog food and cats, we are, we have caught up, we're good for the. We'll, we'll make it through the rest of the year thanks to those donations. And then I had some people donate, um, some other items that if you get us through, it doesn't cost us anything, you know, funding, funding everything I can. About the only thing physically that I really need is a disinfectant that will kill the parvo and that stuff, but we're looking at about the two hundred to two hundred and eighty-dollar fee to be able to cover the rest of this year. And I don't know where to pull that third, potentially, they said credit card, getting that on the credit card, but. Say everything else, though, I, besides with the bills that are coming in that have been spent, we have not spent any more big, big money wise.
Wouldn't it be wiser to wait until the December meeting to, when you get a little bit, the full figure there, Heather? There's a little amount, you know?
We, I've already advertised this amount, um. If you guys wanted to run, um, the accounts to continue to run negative until we can do it in one.
But this would come out of County General.
No, this is just appropriating.
From their own fund.
That they have right now. But December, I need hard numbers to see if they actually have enough in their fund to complete the year.
I think we go ahead and approve this.
I need to, I need to. Squared up to where we are.
And, and know that if we are approving something the second week of December, that means I need it like fifteen days early so that I can meet advertising requirements if I have to. So it needs to happen.
I'm, I'm gonna be Kevin's best friend.
And this is both, if we're looking at this this evening, this is both the forty-eight hundred and the.
The donation line.
Okay, that under the donation line, it, it just says twenty-one thousand, so would that, that cover some of this or is that a different?
Donation is forty-eight hundred.
The donation is what I have.
I have animal shelter donations, which is.
Which will be forty thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars in spay and neuter donations. General medical of three thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars. Sponsor equipment, which some of this has already been spent, is the three thousand six hundred dollars. And then we have received, um, shelter supplies in the amount of two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which I thought could be used for anything for the shelter supplies, so I would think that dog food, anything like that could be purchased from that line item.
When that's disinfected?
Yeah, or disinfected or whatever.
And I, I have an idea for a donation on that, I'm gonna, okay, I'm checking on it tomorrow, so that's fourteen thousand seven.
Yeah, and, um, and that is just from donations that could be used and I'm hoping that that will, hoping that will help the animal shelter line items.
And then whatever else.
That's all with animal shelter, the last thing for the commissioners is the economic development studies.
Do we need to vote on?
Yeah. Do you wanna go ahead and do that or do you wanna wait for the?
Let's just wait, wait, wait for the.
Yeah, we did choice that.
So I send everybody the revised scope and cost estimate, break it into two phases. Focus to the second part, once we have some definites, we can go to the RDA and continue funding for phase two. But without anything, we can go to the RDA and that's for anything. Nothing really good though. And get a few comments.
Hey, the, uh, one question I had. I mean, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand for, for phase one is, is pretty steep. Um, I mean, was there another consultant looked at?
Well, I put, I put it out to four or five, I only got one, one back. But I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a scope in and of ourselves to say, this is what we need to study, cause I had no idea. I mean, I could have put one out there, but I yeah, I could have missed all sorts of things, so. Well, you go out for requests for qualifications and you get those come back and I think without, you know, those that I sent it to strictly deal with airports and since the study was far more than, than an airport, they, they didn't, they didn't respond. So I mean, I think the one from Madison Airport hands them, they send it to them, they get anything back from them. I don't know what the F S stands for, but that group, they do airports, but, you know, with the other stuff, I just.
So, so since we know an airport's pretty much out of the picture because of restricted airspace and the conditions of the runway, should we look at another consulting firm that's not as specific as airport? I mean, that two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for the, the level, the scope of this is way too much, way too much. Uh, it's not anything against you, it's just the.
Well, these kind of things would be nice to know ahead of time because we've been going down.
Just got the numbers last week, the final number that, we had the five hundred thousand budget, but we didn't know if phase one, phase two were gonna be broken out.
But no, no idea what would be acceptable, how much you were willing to spend. So, I, I, I'm not sure exactly because I get so little feedback, what you really want me to do until the day we meet and then when I do back and try to rearrange things, so.
I will say that the vast majority of taxpayers that I've talked to are not in favor of this, I mean, it's just.
I'm agreeing that.
I think we represent them, so.
I keep, the only thing I keep thinking is it's an economic development of some sort, I mean, this county, you know, we've said on things for a long time, not that this is, I agree, this is a little above what we actually need to be paying out, but we need to have a, an amount of some sort that we can work at economic development, you know, because there's thing. You have to have some plan someplace within the community.
I mean, I went back to River Ridge, I mean, they did not, that did not happen without someone starting a plan down there. You know, do we have the same? No, we don't have the same, but we don't know what we have until we do some sort of study. They didn't know what they had until they did, did some sort of study. If we get a third of what they have, you think that'd have an impact on the county?
And I, like I said, my response to you, the, the two point two point four made the most sense to me, which was studying what it would take to get utilities out there, cause we know that the utilities on the property barely will suffice for what's there along anything else, so.
But if you're, if you're gonna go do market assessments and talk to folks if they're interested or not in some of these things, if you don't know which what you have or don't have there, how can you, well, you know, I mean, some people said, well, you know, why don't they, if people aren't interested, why don't they come and look at it? We've waited thirty years for that and what are we, kind of interest that we have?
And that's really the same thing I'm hearing from the other perspective, but some taxpayers saying to me, probably the most prevalent thing I've heard is, you, you wanna spend that much, you're gonna vote to spend that much money on a study? And I just think people kind of, that sour taste the mouth of spending that much money just to study something. I had somebody yesterday say, to spend money for a study for land that the county doesn't own and has no intention of buying. And of course, I rebutted a little bit during the conversation to say, obviously, um, it, it, there are times when government's purpose is to, um, prep and get something ready, hoping then that, yes, um.
We have an example, example of that in the city too, right?
Right, and it's not, yeah.
What's happened with that?
It's Saturn and Set.
So.
And, and then I think the other thing I've heard is folks that, that telling me if a business wants to use that land and they can study it themselves, or they can, they can spend the money themselves to take a look at you know, what their needs might be, electric, wifi, whatever, you know, road improvements out there, whatever that may be, that's what, what I've also heard over and up.
So did Amazon do that down in River Ridge? Did they go out and study what was in, in that plot of land before they built on it?
Yeah, and, and I was, I had known.
I mean, I doubt they did. I mean, someone went out and marketed that, that piece of property, right?
Yeah, and I, I don't know the historical nature of that to know. I know what it was like when I was a kid, what it looked like aesthetically when I would drive it, but I don't know if the property owner i- is who from, you know, asked Amazon about purchasing that land.
The River Ridge Development Corporation asked.
And I have no idea what they spent to study that, that, um, area as well, obviously we know. And so, I guess we know what's happening.
You know, from, from being on the other programs.
Would you like me to speak to this?
I would, yeah, yeah.
First of all, I know these are difficult decisions, I appreciate everyone involved in this conversation. The way I look at it, to get to first your more narrow question, I mean, we all are recognized tremendous economic engine that is River Ridge, that is, uh, that's grown beyond the, the founders' wildest dreams. But there had to be leadership early on, people had to, um, take a step forward. Uh, and they were local government and, and, and private sector people who did that, I know many of them well. And they remain in the conversation with regional economic development. What we have, I think here is an opportunity frankly to attach to that. In other words, I see our county as a feeder to that monster, um, and, and to others, okay? We have an asset here, um, that has set, is, um, essentially not been a public benefit, uh, since it closed. And as an army, uh, excuse me, as a military asset. And, um, I think in the public interest, uh, just improving ground through the, the future of uh, the land south of the firing line, um, is an asset of tremendous potential value, uh, for future generations and but only if steps are taken now to learn its highest and best uses, uh, going forward. And, um, I look at it anyway, and each of us has our own way of looking at this, as an opportunity of loss if it's not explored. And that you have one-time uses for both public and, uh, uh, private monies, one-time uses. Or you have uses, investments that can produce a compounding of benefit. And when you look at economic development, that's what we're, what's, that is sort of the name of the game, you're not giving a, a one-time use expenditure to some very worthy, uh, local, uh, need. But you're trying to create a, uh, even, uh, more prosperous environment for the entire community going forward, and so, yeah, as a resident, I just, uh, hope that, um, uh, regardless of this conversation tonight, that we continue to look at ways uh, both on this land and other ways going forward to invest in growth that requires leadership to do that. Uh, that requires us explaining and, and, um, and, um, you know, making tough votes.
And answering, pardon, answering the question, she had, do you have any idea what kind of expense they spent on this kind of a scope or anything we're to start with?
This strikes me as, well, I'm not, you know, we can all judge this particular proposal and that's not my place to do. Uh, that's your place to do it, the commission. But, oh, they spent a lot, and it's a, you know, a lot of leadership. Both in the government, from government entities and, and, and from private sector coming together with a vision um, and equity's all the way around the table and risk all the way around too. And, uh, in this case, I mean, if you wanna use an example or other parcels there, I'm very familiar with it, this tour didn't met with them repeatedly. Uh, as have other board members, um, they, it is a marketing vehicle. In other words, in order to attract investment in, and generate growth out of this opportunity that you have before you, we have as a community, you've gotta be able to market it. The problem is, we don't know what to market because we don't know yet what we have. And that's the purpose of the study, as I understand it, is to figure out what we have that we can market.
My biggest question to you and I, I, I appreciate you vision for the future. Why does the ARP money, why does that have to be used that way? Why can't we move with this maybe in a year or six months?
Well, I think, um, my view of that is, first of all, the ARP money is, so, it's a, it's a windfall of an opportunity for you to make that exact kind of investment decision that is harder to make with tax revenue, direct tax revenue. So I in fact see this as exactly the kind of thing that you would, you would look to use for longer-term, uh, purposes. And again, that's your decision to make, not mine, but that's how I look at it. And I, I think that's how other communities around the state have looked at it as well. Um, I think postponing, uh, sending a signal that says this community is not interested in, um, making investments in sort of longer-term economic development opportunities cools the desire on the part of regional partners, now I can speak from what I know. Cools the desire on the part of regional partners to look at us as, um, an area where, oh, these guys wanna play ball, let's, let's take a chance on them. So it's a two-way conversation, we do not live in a county with walls around it, we're part of a regional economy. We want to look forward leaning and they want us to be that way. We want to be part of this juggernaut in Clark and Floyd County, frankly, I do, for our benefit. We have about a hundred and sixty-eight, seven hundred and sixty-two acres out there already.
Sure, in the western woods and the other side, terrible, yeah, we have those too.
So.
I do think it's.
How many acres would we need for the projects that you're anticipating?
I mean, some of the projects may take all of it, except for ours in the states, but, you know. There's a development that even gets started, anything, you know, close to what the river is, thirty-four hundred acres will may run into a problem there, but I, I can't, you know, I don't know exactly and that's, that's why we're doing the study, we don't know. Don't know how much we might need, so.
I do think it's, um, I won't say unfair statement, but obviously I do feel like, um, the, the property, the acreage is not, um, it may be underutilized, but it's certainly not wasted. Um, I, I have gone Kruger, like, my husband is in the lottery every year to hunt out there, I was in Big Oaks for two meetings this year and delighted to bring new people out there that had never been before, I've, I've taken things to the recycling center, it's out there. My sister rented a rental property out there, so I guess I, I think there's obviously certainly some opportunity, but to say that, um, you know, that it's no heritage would really defend that.
Wasted, no, no one said it's wasted, we just wanna develop the, the open stuff, I'm, I'm not planning on it. And I think we'll fight against that, that, if they, those that are already out there, then that's not the plan.
Back to the study, yeah. What were they thinking the timeline on phase one and man hours, that kind of thing?
So, I mean, we, we're open, I mean, when we're starting two months earlier, to get it done by the end of the year, so we're probably looking at a March or April kind of time frame.
That would be phase one, is that what you're saying?
I would have stuff ready for June for ready.
Any, any other questions?
I had to, that's, that was my, that was mine, I, I want to see the face done, but.
Do you know how many uh people ever, but on the, on the study?
Well, I have a number of different partners, I, I don't know specifically, I think if we.
How many different meetings and interviews and that type of thing would be done?
Who would be our stakeholder? Us and the landlord and.
If you, if you only do like a phase, the only, I know they have both phases, but you only did the phase one. To be able to get something, so you, you get a feel on everything.
This is, every, every line says no physical testing will be included.
Yeah, I know.
And.
I'm not gonna, might dig in the ground or.
Right, but it, but it's a, it's a high level. I mean, a lot of this can be done using um. Using, you know, GIS, using Google Earth and, and uh, and a few drive-throughs and. My most expensive litigation attorney I deal with, he could work for sixteen point six weeks on this project, forty hours a week. For two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. That's, that's my struggle.
So is, do we know that all the plutonium has been removed?
Pretty sure uranium and it's north of the firing line. We will not be looking at north of the firing line.
We have four hundred and seventy-two acres in the wooded parcel and it's in a nature conservancy, so that rules that out. And I believe Gruber Lake, it's two hundred fifty-four acres, it's the same scenario, so.
It can't change.
What was, what was the total acreage on that?
I believe it's four seventy-two in the wooded parcel and two fifty-four on Gruber Lake. Now we've got some other acreage out there. Off the Michigan Road into the south of the gate, I know that it was like ninety acres in one parcel. We had looked at the jail previously, but it's all pretty much wetlands, so we might as well just.
Because we didn't look at, when we were looking for property by jail, we did look out there, yes.
So my, my question, Kevin, and I guess you too, Dave, is when we, when we coordinate the idea of River Ridge and the Jefferson brewing ground. And I've read the scope, um, you know, drag racing, go-karts. Drones, what are we talking about for drones?
I mean, what's a huge market potential.
Okay, so.
And there, there are people in the state of Indiana, the companies that were born here, who are um. Would be the type of people who would want to use.
You mean for recreation or for delivery?
Uh, businesses.
Businesses, okay, so.
Businesses that are growing.
All right, so you're. The Regional Planning Commission, which you're on, right?
It's, no, it's not regional, it's a regional development authority represented by counties, uh, sort of this side of the Ohio River adjacent to.
Well, who are these businesses?
I'm not at liberty to say.
Okay, so that's, yeah, see, that's what I don't know.
Well, you can expect. Businesses to share their trade secrets with you in a public setting.
Understand, that's, that's a shame, that's a shame, because if we could, if we could just know more, you know, and, and like I said, maybe we could come back. To this, not necessarily have, use the RP money for this, we could come back to this. And, and I, why would you, why would you dismiss Jefferson County as a board later on if we came back to it?
I'm giving you my advice based on um, things that I know and my participation as someone who um. Both has a regional responsibility and a one, and to represent Jefferson County, I take it very seriously, I've been at it for seven years. And uh, the um, opportunity to participate successfully. Uh, through this regional development forty um, requires participation. Okay, obviously Madison and Hanover did extremely well and Jefferson County can too. Um, and we, we need to, we need to play ball, okay? Then um, we can just, you know, and I'm not speaking solely about this particular vote you're facing, okay? But um, we'll only have an opportunity to earn the votes of the board. For significant investment in this county if we give them something to vote on.
But that's still a gamble, that's a big gamble. It is, because possibly.
If you're asking about the ARP money.
Yeah, yeah.
Timing is of the essence because you have, you're gonna have, most likely, if the legislature agrees with the governor. Which seems highly likely, another round, okay, another round of funding. State revenues are such that there will be um, uh, the potential for very significant funding again. Okay, but in order to get in the pipeline to, to participate in the rate, you gotta raise your hand. There has to be leadership earlier on, you can't wait till the last minute and get into this substream, you can't get on the train that's already moving.
Keep thinking about the recent project at my house that um, quote was far beyond what we had budgeted, but far beyond what we knew we could pay. And what we should pay, um, and instead of just um, putting an X on the entire project. And we went back and asked um, got a second quote and also asked the existing company to completely scale down. To say, we've now decided we, we can't include this and this because the funds just aren't there. Or we just, after much more thought, don't feel like, you know, we're gonna be able to utilize that to its potential. I look at this and knowing that, like Chris said, air is included, they put all this together for this grand price that many of us at this table. Um, feel like there's too much money to spend on this and not to delay the project, but pardon me says. If, if we know this is more than what we want to spend on this study. And we know some aspects of the study, um, you know, would not be valuable information, of course, pardon me, wants to go back and say. Give us another quote, um, ta- taper this down, um.
I, I'm a little like Heather, I thought it would come in a lot less than this amount. I felt like it would.
Both, both phases will put it over a half million.
And there's, and with all due respect to you, Kevin, uh, there's so much we can do with that here in the county, I understand.
And you know what? Not one person has brought up any idea whatsoever about what they want done, right?
That's, that's it?
That's getting taken care of, right?
Right, right, okay, okay, well, there's other things, there's other things.
Like one of our previous meetings, we mentioned, you know, rural wifi is being a, a hot topic.
And, and we're pursuing that.
And that, and they, and they have, you know. Session of that we voted bought already on the.
State match money that. Probably go a lot further. Now, I'm not, I'm not against economic development, get, getting a study done, but two hundred ninety-nine thousand for phase one. I could get, I'd get three buddies of mine and I together for thirty days and put this study together. I mean, it's.
You've done marketing assessments for, for all these things that we're looking at?
I have, I have friends that are in marketing, they, they could help with that. I'm not saying it, we would be as perfect as what these companies would be. But the nuts and bolts of it, um, I feel like the, the air should be scrubbed. Because we know it's restricted airspace. The, the runway, uh, as, as I told you in my email, it, it's, it's in horrific condition. It couldn't be resurfaced um, in the, in the condition it's in. I, I just feel like that. We could trim this down to get it to where it's more financially.
You know, I, I, I've sat up here for four or five months now and no one has said anything, what is, what is it acceptable?
What did we tell you, Dave? We told you that the air part was not.
Good, because I, I, we've trimmed it, we've brought it back, what, what value do you see in it? Let me know. I can talk to him about it, but I'm not gonna keep guessing as to, maybe this will be, oh, maybe this.
Right, but the, so, when I saw the, when I saw the deer field was still in there, now, I can't speak for us, the council, that was kind of. We, it fell on deaf ears.
Okay, I, I want to say something about UAV since it came up. Doesn't require higher space, you know, the potential for significant economic activity that does not require the full higher space.
Sure, but it doesn't require a runway for them either, because they are. What, what part of that runway needs to be fixed, or if, if all of it does, if we want a part, portion of it. Uh, it's not, I mean, it's just to get and, what's the condition? Let's document it, let's show people that they're interested in that. This is what it's gonna take. That's what that purpose is, right? If you look at the marketing assessments, I mean, how much deal with air? No, correct?
Right, I did, and.
So they're doing, they're doing an inventory on the runways, maybe, yeah, all right.
And a lot of this just appears to be inventory and documentation. Right, and there's not, there's not, you know, there's not any testing, there's not, I mean, there's marketing setting, whatnot. But the, here, here, page one. Says the study will provide both the county and the owner of JPG with a strategic roadmap identifying uses. For a currently underutilized asset in respect to the market potential viability. With that, and back to River Ridge, there was a group of investors that went in there and then there was the county that came in and supported them. It was a combined effort, is the owner of the property going to assist in this study? Because they had the most, I'm gonna say they had the most benefit, they have quite a bit to benefit from the study.
That's the first meeting in, in the study. Stakeholder engagement.
Sure, after we've approved the money to fund it.
We're not gonna, if he says, I'm not interested in anything, we're not gonna keep spending down the road.
I guess my curious, why isn't that conversation taking place before we got this far? As to whether or not the property owner's even interested.
Well, in a generic way, he is interested, we've had that discussion. Is he interested in the things that we're gonna lo- look at as far as marketing assessments? I don't know yet.
As for me, I, I just wish you'd go in a different direction. I would like to come back to it if you want.
Well, Gary, let me, you know, you're not gonna give, if you, putting aside that kind of funding to do a study later is just, is, won't happen.
Well, you're saying it won't happen, it doesn't mean.
Well, in the six years I've been a county commissioner, it, it hasn't happened, okay, so that's what I'm basing my stake.
Okay, okay, well, I, I think we can do a lot more with the five hundred thousand, that's my position and I'm, I'm just gonna stick to it, sorry.
So jot down your ideas and send them to. Is that a hard question?
No. I had in my head that I was hopeful that um, that, that a hundred thousand dollars of what we had earmarked. And potentially devoted to, to study some strong possibilities with Matt, if we could find some matching, I, I'll double that. Through a grant or, um, after another opportunity where, what could we get for two hundred thousand dollars?
Those are the monies, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, what, two hundred, about, about half of the five hundred is what I guess I was. I've been looking at. I don't know, uh, Heather had a good idea a few minutes ago when she said, I realize they've given that to us, this is the amount.
Two fifty, is that what I go back with them or is it two hundred? Tell me, I'll go back and, I'll go back and continue to negotiate with them. But, but I can't keep shooting at the air when I don't know.
Two hundred. I would say two hundred, yeah, yeah. Maybe that's been, and, and maybe to, for Dave, and they, we have not, we have said here and not said to him, you know, this is what we really. This is the amount, it's kind of like when building a building, and build buildings in this county, you know, we, they, we said, okay. You've got to come in under a certain amount, I know when we built the extension office out there. You know, the, the contractor kept bringing it back and forth to us, higher and higher and everything and I, I didn't, Bobby was on the, the, at the time. And everything, and we said, what part of this amount do you not understand? Because we gave him a certain amount, you know? So, I don't know.
That's fine, I, I just give me a target, okay, two hundred, I'll go back and talk to him. And. Can take them those, I just, I, I just need that feedback, I don't need it the day of the meeting and then to stand here again, okay? I tried, I, I gave it to you as soon as I got it, so hopefully just. Give me the feedback, that's all I have, so, I'll go back to them and see what we can do for two hundred.
In all fairness, I, I think most of us thought we would have it right that Monday following our last board meeting or Tuesday. And so I think that we thought we might have more time to collect our thoughts and I thought most of us would come tonight and discuss it. Versus when we got it last week. We were just waiting.
Right then, transfers and additions.
Um, I.
We have a motion on this.
Yeah, we need to.
That we gave him a suggestion, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a motion, but we gave him a suggestion that to, to curve it down to a certain amount.
We don't even know if they can do it.
That's right, that's exactly.
I, I think it can be reflective in the meeting minutes, I'm not sure that.
Okay, transfers.
Okay, transfers and additions. Uh, first, I would like to have a motion, um. Just to officially give me approval to clean up any negative accounts.
All in favor?
That's a necessity.
Okay, and then um, next, we have already handled the treasures transfer. And then we have a transfer from EMA, which is account number one thousand zero two two zero three two five zero zero. Vehicle repair for two hundred dollars and one thousand zero two two zero two one two zero zero. Public information, one twenty-six twenty-eight, and he was wanting to transfer that all to. One thousand zero two two oh two one five fuel, in the total receiving would be three hundred twenty-six twenty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Favor.
Okay, and then I think we already talked about this. This is just, we agreed, or if you guys wanna make a motion now that the thirteen hundred dollars that was originally requested as an additional to just be handled in the cleanup for the carpet cleaning for the MA office.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then we have a transfer from, for highway from fund number eleven seventy six zero zero two zero two three three zero zero by two minutes to eleven seventy six zero zero four three sixty two zero zero in, for repair trucks in the amount of twenty six thousand.
I'm not gonna mention that we forgot transfer the highway department.
Oh, second.
Okay, and then that moves us on to additionals. Would you like me to do the additionals that were submitted for this month or the additionals from last month? That was last month. Okay, so we had a couple of additionals that were hanging out from the sheriff's department, which was county general one thousand zero zero five zero two one one office supplies in the amount of three thousand one thousand zero zero five zero two two three zero zero garage and motors in the amount of fifteen thousand. One thousand zero zero five zero three two two zero zero travel in the amount of three thousand. And one thousand zero zero five zero three five three zero zero leads online in the amount of eighteen dollars and four cents. And one thousand zero one nine zero two four one zero zero household in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty seven ninety six. And then one thousand zero one nine zero two four two zero zero institutional supplies in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And I believe the sheriff's department has sent overwritten explanation of all of those line items now.
And there were some things there I was surprised, you know, I didn't even think about that they have to. Yeah, I should share it. Yeah.
You mean that we have to buy.
I, I said, I just made you come in. I said, there was some things on the explanation and I hadn't even thought about you all having to pay for, you know, at the, at the sheriff's, at the inmates, so.
Make a motion.
Make a motion for proof.
Then, hold on, before we vote, the total, I wanna make sure this is right.
Ten thousand. No, no, that was ten thousand. So the total on that was.
And I can pull up my October minute too. I didn't know if you had that, the total, the total was, the ten thousand was the last. I didn't get that total with you.
I know it's included on our resolution. That's okay. I can tally that up.
It is seventy nine.
Is that thirty two, two seventy six? Is that what that totals up with or does that include the three thousand? No, that's, no, no, that's what it would total up to, right?
The total's thirty two thousand two hundred and seventy six dollars.
First line, yes.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, damn, sorry. Did you motion?
Motion for proof.
I'll second.
Favor.
Okay, and then the next additional, which was also submitted last month, was eleven forty two, which is Coombe Jail. So eleven forty two zero zero one zero one zero one zero zero for miscellaneous dispersments in the amount of three thousand three hundred twenty seven dollars and forty three cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Favor.
Okay, and then that takes us to the. Yeah.
Work guy back to me the other day. People were thinking to themselves, the sheriff elect, how can we help him in the transfer of one administration to the other? Because he's, I mean, he's got, he's gotta move a bunch of people from jail. He's gotta move storage from jail a lot, so. Just to ease your minds a little bit. I've already, I've actually already met with Ben once. And we talked a little bit. I made some suggestions to him. He and Laura are going to a thing called Sheriff School. All sheriffs go to it. Okay, it's a forty hour program where they go through the administrative steps, step by step with the sheriff, what to expect. And I've already set a date on that Monday after they get out. Then I told him to bring all his materials. I, I know what he's gonna bring. So what I'm gonna do is I'll have files set up with him and we'll go step by step. Just giving him my opinion on, you know, things that he should take. He takes whatever he wants. And I've also started the jail staff to move, one thing people don't realize, all those inmates, and we've had a hundred and fifty four this morning. All those inmates, which would be close to a hundred and ninety something, because we've got five other counties, have to be reclassifying. And then you're not gonna be able to move them all. I mean, we don't have the manpower to do it. Because you have to staff two different jails and the process, it takes some time. So I've hopefully, I asked the staff to go ahead and start doing that process because it's kind of lengthy. And hopefully we'll have all that done for him when he takes office. All right?
Awesome.
You guys have a good night.
Okay, so the November advertised additionals are eleven eighty six rainy day, eleven eighty six zero zero one zero one zero one for CAC funding agreement in the amount of seventy five thousand. This was a fund agreement that had not been fulfilled. So I advertised the entire amount to make that process cleaned up through this year.
And there is no discussion needed to alter twenty twenty three funding for them. We'll just keep that as what's budgeted.
Yeah, because it's been sent, sent to and everything.
Yes, it has been, has been sent to the state at what we had put in. And I spoke to them this week stating that if they were going to request additional funds, that it would probably be best to wait until January to request the additional funds for twenty twenty three. Because at this point, we are unsure of what our status is and with our budget.
Then I could send you an email to find out if they've already applied for the additional gifted not-for-profit.
Well, this, this was, this was a prior, that was a prior obligation that we thought had been taken care of and going back on all the minutes and all this stuff and everything. It was fair. What, what got, what, yeah, what I didn't, the only thing that I didn't understand was why they didn't come back. But Chad left and then commissioners, we had to change in the commissioners because I looked back and that was the same year we had some changes in commissioners and we had changes in the council and everything. And I think it just, everything fell through the cracks. So this is an obligation and everything and, and, you know, but I think we need to go back to do it. So if that, in that case, I don't think you want a motion on that. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Okay, and then eleven eighty six zero zero one zero one zero one zero zero for dumpsters for the flood relief. And this is something we have typically paid out of rainy day in the past. That is in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Motion please, pay that out of rainy day.
I can second that.
Okay, and then the next request is computer maintenance, which is in eleven thirty eight zero 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 three one five zero zero in the amount of twenty five thousand. And I believe that explanation came through on a sheet from the commissioners.
Thank you for the details.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, the next is eleven forty, what, and zero zero one zero G zero two zero zero for IT contract in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Next item is eleven forty zero zero one zero one one two zero zero for ADA compliance in the amount of five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And then eleven forty zero zero one zero one 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 zero zero general repair in the amount of six thousand dollars.
Do we not, did we not have a line item for repair? Is this for like courthouse?
Yes, this is in Coombe Courthouse, which has had several hits this year.
It, it's already been depleted, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but this was for the kennel runs.
Okay, okay.
I see you have some money there, but that's allocated for painting projects.
Which I'm sure I've had less than the four thousand now. Just general things that happen.
I would make that motion that that six thousand be allocated for.
Okay, and that brings us to animal shelter donations. Fund number four one zero three zero zero one zero one 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 zero zero Caesar's Bay and neuter donations that we have received in the amount of three thousand nine hundred seventy nine dollars. And then same fund zero zero one zero one one two zero zero general medical donations in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and sixty nine dollars. And same fund number zero zero one zero three zero one zero zero sponsored equipment in the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars. Same fund zero zero one zero two one one shelter supplies in the amount of two thousand six hundred fifty nine dollars.
Sorry.
All in favor.
Okay, and that takes us to animal shelter fund. So fund four zero zero eight zero zero one zero two one three zero zero stay and neuter in the amount of four thousand dollars. Same fund zero zero one zero two one three zero one rabies certificate in the amount of three hundred dollars. And then zero zero one zero two one nine zero zero equipment in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
All in favor.
Which then takes us to resolution twenty twenty two fifteen. Which is all of those additionals incorporated on one.
It's not, I have sixteen. The date is the fifteenth, but I have resolution sixteen. I mean, she may said sixteen.
I, she just got it all in my.
She said fifteen.
Said fifteen, but I think sixteen.
Number sixteen tomorrow is the sixteen.
Yep.
You know, my dad wished him happy birthday tomorrow.
And that's everything. It's listed here. Total of a hundred and eighty thousand.
Nine. Motion.
Second.
All in favor.
I will say, I, I love to do resolutions and summarizing.
This makes it so.
And all of us sign, we need to sign a resolution tonight.
Yes, and the resolution is there with ready to be sent around with the pink, the pinky, yes.
It makes it a whole, all the way around.
Well, I can follow.
Right, it's just easier to have everyone in the same order.
Do you have any comments?
Change parts a little bit.
Okay, so my office has been out. We have visited all of the sites except for we still have Cayman and Brooksburg to visit on Friday. And the sales have been down a little at each site. So I'm not sure a hundred percent what the contributing factor to that is. If word's just not getting out, but we are using the texting system. We are posting on Facebook. We are sharing. We are doing everything we can to get those hard sold to keep that program running.
I shared it.
I've heard the staff say that I keep getting these texts.
Yes.
And I said, well, if you live in town, ignore them.
Right, if you don't, buy it.
Right, and I think tonight, I thank my staff for being out there. I was out yesterday at Chelsea and it was cold. Tonight, it was cold. My husband and son set up ten by ten pop-up for them with walls to try to keep some heat in, but it is not a fun job. But we are trying to make it as accessible to the public as possible.
And I think the public, the public is very pleased if you're, if they do get them at, at everyone that we saw. I worked with the Rikers Ridge one, helped them and they all thank us. Thank heavens. I don't have to go into the courthouse and, and, and buy it, you know, so the ones that bought it.
Okay, so our next meeting is December thirteenth.
December thirteenth.
I will not be here because I have a surgery scheduled that day, so Judy's last meeting.
I also have to be take care of it.
Okay.
Black is your, your favorite motion.